You know, they're making it.
That's hard.
It's expensive.
That's how we can take them on the mountain.
Look it up, that's how. Seventeen months out.
And he's about to make his sound.
Cause that's how.
It does.
And there's.
So we.
That goes.
I saw you. But they're going. Cause they're. And they. And they. And they.
Look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I get to look at.
So. All right.
Anyway, it's wouldn't be a back solution.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna name it off for a key. And go all the way just all ready and done to sign it.
Okay.
Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's sign in.
I'm.
My day.
They didn't get your. Sorry.
Yeah, skill community, yeah. Same thing, you know, boss. Sign the. All around these little.
Yeah.
We're trying to.
Okay. It's five thirty-three. Sergeant Lele.
And the pledge of. And pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant Torett, for letting me walk over here. This is.
What? You go, who's he?
Sure.
Um, okay, number one additions, deletions, uh, are there any deletions to the agenda? We have to add five point oh nine approved bandit first responders flyer. Five point one oh approved still water supplier and remove three point oh eight OC presentation.
Wow.
Uh, do we have public input for items on the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. That's just. Uh, may I have a motion?
My move.
All right.
Second, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. There, one point five, public input for items on the agenda. Okay. Consent agenda, approved work session minutes from September eighth, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion?
I'm in commotion to approve work session minutes for.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Regular board meeting minutes from September eighth. May I have a motion?
I mean, you're separating some regular board meetings.
Second.
I second. You know the. This.
Board meeting. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Close. Motion passes. Uh, okay, three point oh, we have information. Uh, and we are on to reports and discussions, four point oh one enrollments.
Our enrollment is staying steady. Um, we have more pitch right now than we ended last year. Um, district that a client was given to you in your packets, if you have any questions, or admin, you can pass. Um, division twenty-two assurances is something that we have to do every year to mark the boxes to make sure we have enough. Days in our calendars, unit days, um, making sure we have enough hours. Making sure that our kindergartners are at certain time, it just goes through all of that. And then it also goes through some things that goes during your pocket. And then SIA, I'm gonna let a bandana folder.
Yeah, so the information that's in the packet is just the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five annual, um, SIA report.
Sure.
That, uh, we need to, um, make sure to disclose to everybody. So SIA stands for student investment account grant. Um, it's funded through the corporate activity tax. And, um, last year in twenty-four, twenty-five, it funded, um, a behavior specialist, academic advisor, um, for PE teachers. Our district nurse, um, and a portion of two of our CTE teachers that we have. Uh, and also a portion of our mental health therapist, uh, one of them. So our plan in twenty-five, twenty-six obviously looks a little bit different than it did. Last year, um, which, you know, we can go over at another board meeting, um, just due to, you know, different funding constraints, um. But yeah, all the, the full report that was provided to ODE is in your report. So, um, any questions on this?
Yeah.
All right, good. Anything else?
Uh, thank you for dealing with the, uh. Coming, uh.
Students?
Yes.
And all.
And all that fun stuff.
Oh, yeah.
That's coming.
Yeah.
Are we gonna go over, are we, this is important, before I ask? Your questions? All right, OC, science of reading.
Yes.
Can I get a report on that? And what is pumpkin decoration supposed to look like?
So I came up with that. Last week.
I love it.
I thought I just needed some. Some fun.
Yeah.
Thing at the elementary school. Um, so I. Put something together and it hasn't started yet. So it asked me on October thirtieth when we're voting, but it's open to staff and students. Um, and so each grade, each class will, the idea, I should say, is that they'll come around, we'll have a table down, you know, we have white hallways, so we'll have a table for staff, kinder for second, third, fourth. Um, and then they'll vote, they'll vote for staff and they'll vote for their grade.
That's awesome.
And then science of reading, um, we had our. Uh. Partner with Core Learning, she came in October ninth. And tenth, so October ninth, she came in and modeled lessons in. One classroom per grade level. And so we have two teachers per grade. So she went into one of them. I covered the other five homes, so the other teachers. Could go in and watch, um, the expert model, the explicit, um, phonics lesson in every grade level. She also went into. Our Title One reading class and went into our, uh, resource program. And modeled lessons there. And then on Friday, we had a full group. For about two and a half hours. And then based off the teacher surveys, she broke up and met with each grade level for an hour based off of. One of the topics that they chose in the survey. Um, to really kind of hone in and tailor their needs to their needs. And then she'll be back in January, so we'll do the survey again. Um, and she'll model again, or she'll comment and observe teachers, whatever that, you know, whatever they need. Um, and then we'll do it all over again. But the feedback that, that I received and that she received was that it was, it was. Great for teachers to be able to see it, cause you can say all the things.
Yeah.
Until it's modeled for you, just like how students learn best, right? Um, I. I don't put words in their mouths, but like what they, the gist was. It made it a little bit more real for them, like, oh, I can do this, or I'm already doing part of this, or I'm already doing that. So. I thought it was very beneficial.
Sound like fun.
Yeah.
And you got back to, you get to be in the classroom again.
Yeah, that's okay.
Uh, Becky, you, uh, mentioned in your report, uh, you guys are doing emotional support. Techniques for emotional regulations to stay calm in a classroom.
Brain talk.
Brain talk.
Yes.
Break that down, cause I need a demo right now, cause I'm a little bit stressed.
The eyes.
I'm a little.
So I started this, uh, years ago, back down at the elementary school, and we talked about how the brain works. And the different, yeah, the hand model of the brain based on Dan Siegel's work. You paid attention. So, uh, we've done it several different ways throughout my years at Harbor Lights. We've done it as a whole. School assembly, did not feel like that was the best way to get the information. We've done grade band, so five, six together and seven, eight together. Still felt like we could do better. We've done grade level and this year we're doing classrooms. And so I, uh, joined Ms. Poi in her health room. And we did brain talks with every group she sees sixth through eighth grade. And then on another day, I went into both fifth grade classrooms. Our counselor, mental health therapist Lori Rice joins me and we do a review, uh, when we're talking to kindergarteners, it's a little different than we're talking to eighth graders. And so we kind of. Make it match the group of kids and really allow them to kind of drive the conversation, cause a lot of it is questions and. That back and forth of can you think of a time when? Your lid was flipped? And, you know, how were you feeling? And when we talk about the different parts of the brain, right, that we call it the lizard brain, that's. Asking the question, am I safe? And generally feeling like physical safety and the emotional brain, we call it the heart part. And that's really more, am I loved? Am I valued? Do I have worth? And then when we can put that lid down, that's where we do our very best thinking and we call that the unicorn horn of power. And it does not matter if you're in kindergarten or eighth grade, they all giggle a little at the unicorn horn of power. And, uh, and I have students who come in and have other learning that they've done. I had a student last year who had been to. A camp, I think in Ashland, and you know, I call it the lizard brain and the unicorn horn of power. He had learned about the lizard brain and then. The wizard brain. And so we've added that in. And, uh, I give Emmett credit where credit is due. That was a term he brought to me.
Okay.
Um, the good news is I received feedback from, uh. One of our fifth grade teachers and from a couple of different kids about how. They needed it. It was good timing for them and they were really open and willing to talk about times where they felt like. Their emotional brain had taken over and that they can't do their best thinking and we brainstorm, how can you, in your space? Regulate? How can you get help if you need to co-regulate with an adult? And, uh, who are some people you can talk to if you need to talk it out?
Uh, Sam and Jim, are you guys? Since. They've laid the foundation of this. Are you feeling that? I've noticed that there's some decorations going on in the halls. And you guys spend a lot more time with kids, uh. In your report, building relationship with trust and activities. Interacting. Uh, how that is curving your. Discipline and your actions and interactions with that. Brings a touch on that, how that is working in the high school.
We are, uh, neck deep in preparation for homecoming. The kids have been spending a lot of extra time, including coming up over the weekends, getting their always ready. Uh, this year, uh, under the guidance of the new leadership teacher, Mr. Salmon's. They, they've connected it to, uh, biome, so we see, uh, each grade level, um, and I'm gonna get them out of order, but you'll get the gist. Uh, temper forest, Arctic. Jungle and.
Just not tiger. I don't, I don't. Uh, yeah. That's fine. That's where I've been.
Um, and so, uh, they've been working together on that and we have seen a lot of cross collaboration. The freshmen, uh, started kind of late. I don't think they fully understood what we were doing. We saw some upperclassmen, um, kind of take them by the hand. And, uh, show them what the hallways, uh, should look like and, uh, help get the supplies and everything. And we saw quite a bit of, uh, upperclassmen helping the freshmen the other day. Uh, directly connected to behavior, we see that a lot when we have new students. Our, uh, our students are incredible and they help us. Um, explain norms and procedures, which of course are started at the other campuses, uh, making our jobs quite a bit easier.
Excellent.
I've made a lot of trips to Dollar General this week. Yes. But again, back to the collaboration. Communication with teenagers is difficult and sometimes colors are hard. And so I brought along colors of balloons. And when I went back and said, do you still have those? Because we can use them somewhere else. They're like, oh no, the juniors took them or the sophomores took them or something. So. They were really working well, well together. And the day off on Friday, there was peer pressure going on to get their help and, uh. Lots of kids there on their day off, so I thought that was good.
Uh, Jim, uh, I gotta say thank you this week. I used the new website for figuring out when. Uh.
Oh, for the events coming up?
Yeah, for all the events. Thank you for having a new website, so that we.
Oh, yeah, and that will continue to expand, cause I, it's something I'm learning and it's growing. So hopefully by the end of the year, it's gonna look completely different in a good way.
Well, as a secondary, a secondary parent, the wife does the schedule and she's got that breaking down.
Yeah.
Uh, it helps that when I look something up and don't have to ask her and not infer that rap.
For sure, yeah, of course.
Uh. Can we talk about how the open house went?
Oh.
It was a blur for me, so, cause I was running around chasing my girl, uh, from room to room on scavenger hunt. So what it looked like in your guys' buildings?
We had the biggest turnout. We have three hundred and sixty people come to the open house. The last year was three hundred, which is.
Yeah. Real shit is packed.
And, you know, it's elementary school and, um, but it's fun. The kids come in and I tell them they're in charge and they just really want that, you know, so.
Well, it's their home.
Yeah.
So much time, so.
Um, I have found that if you feed them, they will come. And so they know they have to do the things to get the cookie. And so we had a scavenger hunt, as you mentioned, and they got to go around. We have a few people in different places. We want to make sure kids know where to go. And, uh, at least one or two did the scavenger hunt without their parents. Um. Part of it was take your parents around. I'll be a little more explicit next year, but, uh, but yeah, and it's nice to see families coming together. And so, uh, we counted students rather than humans that came in. But, uh, I think m- most of our students had three or four humans, whether their siblings or parents or extra parents or whatnot with them. And it was nice.
I was very impressed with the turnout. About to.
Yeah.
Run around the city on the old. As I was looking for my daughter.
It was a little bit of a blur for me too, as I'm saying, thank you, get the last thing is say hi to Miss A. And so some of them would say, I'm done. That's, you're not done. No, I'm done. You've got something not checked off. You're not done. No, I did it all. Read it again, please. Oh, hi, Miss A. There we go.
Uh, trade expo.
Went really well, uh, Ms. Kalina and, um. Mr. Holy Cross, Mr. Markin, and a lot of, uh, Mr. Hans, uh, under the law now, the kids have to take a college and career. Class, so we, I saw an opportunity to take them to, uh. Canyonville?
Yeah.
Canyonville. Um, lots of industry partners out there, uh, giving kids exposure to potential future careers. A lot of which we already have in the high school and some other ones that, you know, they're learning about. Um, so we're again, in addition to pushing a well-rounded education, we're, we're looking at jobs in the future.
And. And according to the, the photos, uh. There's like a guitar. Um, fireplace that's being built for, it's maybe option off of.
It's almost too pretty to use, but yes, it's a.
Oh, my goodness. You guys haven't seen that yet.
Defense.
For band.
For band. Let's go. Uh, the trio leadership conference.
I wish I'd have brought, um, Ms. Kalina, uh, is our trio liaison with SWAC. She sent five kids up there. Uh, this one had stricter parameters. The kids had to be involved in trio. Um, they were able to network and collaborate with other students, um, through Marshfield and North Bend and Coquille. Um, and just kind of see how they can map out their year. It was predominantly freshmen, so we're getting them used to the, uh, leadership program.
Lots of freshmen, right?
Lots of freshmen.
Awesome. I'm, I'm just going down my notes. You're, you're my skip sites. We're almost there, but we're almost there.
We're really close.
Got some, what's up? They're digging, moving earth. What's next?
Uh, you're looking at it. Uh, they're gonna do ground grading, which is what they're doing now with the ADA stuff, which is what, why they push the fences back. So that's gonna be finished up. Here this week, uh, be all back to normal, all paved, everything's paved. Um, and then, uh, final inspection and final walkthrough is the twenty-seventh of this month. And hopefully, depending on the county, we should have our certificate of occupation. Which we're done.
Let's go.
By the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven, hey. But we needed it.
Yes, that's what we.
And we have something coming up. At the LC. That sounds super fun. I'm not gonna join in. I'll just pay money for it.
Pumpkin corn class, we've seen.
I got them.
Yeah. We felt like a good start.
I like this. And I love the stump of what you're, what, what we got going on.
For the.
Yeah, your goal is.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
For STEM in the classroom. And I've already been talking with OMC and they're gonna bring in an assembly and a science festival and.
Um, we're gonna get some, um, which I was gonna tell my teachers that our staff need tomorrow more details.
Well. We'll go for it. We'll go for it. All right. That's kind of where I'm. I'm good, I'm good.
You're good.
I'm good.
Questions, I don't thought that was.
I read the entire thing twice.
Yeah.
I fell asleep on my computer, making these questions. My neck still hurts.
Uh. Oh, speaking of, oh, speaking of that guitar, the.
Oh.
Well, they passed this making, uh, Gold Rush coming.
Gold Rush.
Fundraiser for the Booster Club, which provides, uh, funds for extra curriculars in the district, and that includes. Everything includes band, it includes.
Speech.
Speech, it includes all the sports and so. Make it if you can. And there's ways to help out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's it. Are anybody have any other questions? Right now? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Lindy.
I know Lindy, so Lindy.
She had a period, she's, if you're not aware, she's a star in the play, so she was a double booked tonight.
Yeah. What happens with those kids, they're busy. Uh, okay, five point oh, we're on to action items, bills in the amount of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents. May I have a motion?
I guess. I second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Hey, the bill.
Check those. Um, opposed? Motion passes. Uh, five point oh two, the Western International Band Clinic. Request kicking up band.
Western.
It's Western.
Three times eight from the first row.
Um, request permission to take kids out of state, um. I don't know how many until they audition. Um, and. Or they accept it or not. It's November twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. It's in SeaTac, Washington, um, to, to qualify, they have to audition. And then be selected. Um, it's kids from all over the world, literally from Australia to Japan to Canada.
Um, so it's a huge thing. There's four bands that participate. There's about a hundred and eighty, if each band.
Um, of different levels. So it's a big thing. Um, the professionals they get to work with this year are trombonist, uh. Perry Waters, jazz trombonist, and Patrick Sheridan, who is a tuba player, um, he's. Funnier than he get out to. So anyway, um, questions?
Uh, how many, one last, like, what's the average number?
Well, last year, um, I believe it's at four.
Cool.
Um, and this year, um, the kids have been recording auditions are pretty good. I'm a little concerned. I welcome the challenge, so we'll figure it out.
Uh, is there specific, but there's no specific place to discuss?
No, I just have to have permission to take them out of state.
Okay, I love that. Uh. May I have a motion?
Motion to. Motion second.
That's, sorry, uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Thank you.
You're great.
Thank you. All right, we have some heavy reading for the board. Any, any? So, okay. Uh, five point oh, can you? Can I bring these all together or we have to do one by one?
You can do, um, like five point oh three through five point oh five. If you want to.
Okay, I'll, I'll, of course, ring term. Let's do second readings and then first readings, um. So five point oh three is the second reading of policy EFA, the local wellness, may I have a motion?
I have one question. There's like a removal about. Something about. Discussion of healthy eating there, like, is that something we did as a statewide thing? Like, do we know where that came from?
I don't know where it is.
Yeah.
I think part of that is dependent on our food program.
Yeah.
Arms as well. And we have to provide that.
Yeah.
So we.
So it's in there, but it may not be in that same.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we have to.
Yeah, there's a section that we're basically take out, like being required to discuss healthy eating. I, I don't know where that's from. I was just curious if we know.
It's big state.
It's statewide.
Yeah.
Okay.
The wellness policy actually was established when Michelle Obama.
Hmm.
Um. Was in office with her husband and she took on the nutrition program. And, and so this is the wellness program came from that. So a lot of the restrictions. Um, that's when vending machines started going out of, um, schools. That's when cops started to leave, sort of pop and stuff. So. This is the local wellness is something that. Seems to have changes and you're supposed to look at it every year.
Okay.
And so. This is our year. It's also part of our audit. Next week, so.
Oh, I, I have a question about it also, about, um. Food and beverages that may not exceed the nutrition standards, blah, 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 maybe sold through fundraisers on the school campus. Is that being believed?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's a line from.
Yeah. So we can't do that. So if you remember, like, we used to be able to have bake sales and all kinds of things. If they don't fit within the nutrition. And the calorie intake, we can't sell them during school hours. We can sell them before and after, as long as they don't compete with our breakfast program.
Okay, so it's the school day is the key word here. But they can still do. Bake sales just after school.
Right. Once that we do in the case all the time, yes.
During. Yes. All right. So we probably shouldn't have especially first.
Uh-huh.
Uh, can I have a motion? To pass it. Which pass, second. Second. Discussion, we already had it. All those in favor? Well, as opposed? Motion passes. Uh, okay, so we do have five point oh four and five point oh five, we're both first reading revised policy. Uh, JFCEB. Personal electronic devices. And JFCEB dash AR, request for personal device exemptions. Uh, may I have a motion?
We, have we moved a voter? Do we have questions on?
Move first.
Okay.
Second, first, second, and then discussion.
Okay. Or you wait.
Second.
Okay, now.
Uh, yeah, I guess just quick question on this on the. It's like, I think it's page fifty-six, it talks about exemptions only be approved for like documented needs, students and families not here at convenience, like. So what types of like? I guess exemptions to be typically granted in this case. I know, I know there's new problems.
Five oh four IEDs and ELLs currently in our district will have plans that they can still use.
Hmm.
Devices.
Well, sorry, was the first acronym five oh four?
Of course, yeah. So that's usually, that's usually a medical pieces that might be like, um, a vote for one of our diabetic students, and that's probably monitored. IED may be that they need sound, but they're wireless, so that would. That piece. And then ELL, we have them using the earbuds that actually translate.
Hmm, okay. So someone had like an IED file or like an ELL, for example, prior to this policy, like do they? Refile the audio exception, like what does that look? I know this is new, so I'm curious.
Well, that updated.
Okay.
So then I, I believe that in Becky can talk about the IED, but I know the five oh fours were. As we're doing and we're adding that language from the executive order in.
And this is a statewide part.
Yeah.
So we did it first before it was a state law and now it's state law.
Now state blanket it, and then I'm like, oh.
And they have.
Now we need to go back and, and say, we need exceptions, exceptions.
Then we'll probably have changes next year as they go through the issues within the state of different things that we need to change.
As the kids find exceptions.
Yes.
Uh, okay. So we did first second discussion. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? That's a sleepy. All right. I'm pretty with abandoned community youth center flyers. This was for Halloween.
That's weird. Yeah. Yeah, they did another two, another two or one, so I put there. Okay. Think you're probably do a blanket, I don't know.
Uh, so let's see, this one for the youth center is Cranberry Camp, this is November twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, kids active, these three day camps. I mean, those three, this abandoned youth center. Uh, liter, unlocking literacy superpowers. Going to set November eighteenth for the abandoned community youth center for fun interactive workshop. Uh, trunk or treat. Uh. Oh, another haunted house, truck or treat, this is all one calling in. Um, youth centers at the library. So these are all kid-based. Um, specific functions, including still waters, trunk or treat, and then it first required. First responders, trunk or treat, lots of trunk or treats. Um. So let me see, that is five point oh six, nine point oh seven, five point oh eight, five point oh nine, and five one one oh. May I have a motion?
I will be acceptable.
I'll second.
Uh. Any discussion about them? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's all be absolute. Word. Uh, right now we have. Comments, public input for items not on the agenda. We'll read this real fast. Uh, public participation in board meeting is governed by policy BDDH. Commenters should include their name. Um, and if speaking for and of a organization, the name of that organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with common purpose. Up to three minutes, as the board's expression will be allowed to comment. Commenter may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. District staff member. combinations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board to reveal legitimate complaints involving individuals, including board policy K L. Complaints, if appropriate, the chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in a separate session. Comments aimed at state and federally protected classes shall be prohibited. Anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene, or profane language. Impatience, lack of respect for others, and personal attacks are not acceptable behaviors. Demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or idea are not permitted. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. And.
That's a quick question before we start it. I think we had, like, twelve people sign up, which technically means we could go slightly over thirty now, and it's, we're getting, letting everyone talk.
Uh, Cynthia Crosskey, Brian Cross.
Let me know when. I'm here to represent B E A. I am the representative for our building Ocean Crest and the person speaking tonight. I will be sharing this document. This is a letter to the abandoned school board. We dated this September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. We are ready to formally express deep and ongoing concerns regarding the leadership of our superintendent, Sean Schmier. His actions have created a toxic, divisive, and demoralizing work environment across our district. The severity and breadth of these concerns result in a clear loss of confidence by the abandoned education association. We call for a comprehensive evaluation of the performance, starting with a board training and surveys to staff in the surrounding school community. Below are the most critical issues that demonstrate a sustained pattern of harmful leadership or decision making and unethical conduct. First point is hostile work environment and retaliatory practices. Numerous staff members have been forced to resign or have resigned due to abrupt and unexplained changes in workload and placement. There's clear evidence of targeted retaliation, especially towards staff members involved in union negotiations, creating a climate of fear and mistrust. These actions have deeply divided staff and administration, eroding morale and underd- and determining collaboration throughout the district. Sorry, let me say that again, and undermining collaboration throughout the district. Second point is dishonest and manipulative communication. Superintendent Schmier has repeatedly provided contradictory and misleading information to both staff and the community. For example, meetings with staff have left individuals understanding about actions such as reversing involuntary transfers. That are later ignored without explanation. There's many opportunities to revert if they may transfers, and teachers made this request clear, as did a substantial number of parents. After our contract was ratified, union leaders were told that the district learned from their mistakes and may. Transfers in such impactful decisions would not be made without teacher collaboration in the future. But two days before teachers returned to work in August, reassignment emails were sent out to at least three teachers. There was no collaboration. Staff have not been provided with consistent reasons for transfers, and numerous instances have occurred where teachers were told one thing privately. Only to be told contradictory statements later. The dishonest practices are not only unethical, but they have been weaponized to turn the board and the community against teachers. Harm to students through poor decision making. Staff reassignments have placed educators in roles outside of their area of expertise, directly impacting the quality of instruction. Involuntary transfers have led to the loss of essential teaching staff with DJ. I'll stop there. You want me to?
Well, you is giving that to us.
I'll be sharing this with you, but I'm also going to turn it over to someone else to take over at this time, unless I can give more time. Involuntary transfers have led to the loss of essential teaching staff with DJ, D expertise, such as a sixth grade teacher at the middle school. Resulting in overcrowding and destabilizing students' learning environments. The superintendent's decision to skip an entire year of math instruction for middle school students without input from content area experts. Demonstrates a disturbing and disregard for best practices and educational research. Increased teacher workloads without corresponding support, forced staff to dilute construction, further diminishing student learning outcomes. And what's some else to cover?
Uh, Stephanie Holman.
Stephanie Holman, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Ocean Crest, and also the parent of a former and current abandoned student, and I will continue where Cynthia left off. Uh, four, the demoralization of staff. The cumulative impact of these issues has left staff exhausted, undervalued, and demoralized. Instead of focusing on our work, educating and supporting students. We are using our energy to manage constant instability, confusion, and distress. This environment is unsustainable and antithetical to effective education. Five, possible legal and contractual violations. Involuntary transfers have been used as a means of intimidation, particularly towards union members. And were conducted without the required prior meetings or discussions. The superintendent has made coercive, cour- sorry, coercive attempts to discuss negotiations. With individual team members bypassing proper channels. Increased workload in some areas while qualified staff are underutilized in others. Like a highly qualified math teacher only teaching three periods while a science teacher is assigned eighth grade math. Raises serious equity and labor compliance concerns. These issues are not isolated, nor are they minor. They represent a pattern of mismanagement. Manipulation and disrespect for both students and staff. Superintendent Schmier's actions have eroded trust, destabilized instruction. And create an environment that is counterproductive to student success and staff well-being. We urge the board to take the immediate and decisive action to address this leadership failure. The repercussions from poor communication, problematic decision making, and use of divisive rhetoric from the top leader at B S D. Have threatened the integrity and effectiveness of our educational mission. This issue is of the utmost importance for the education of abandoned students. We hope that all board members will give it the full, deep consideration it deserves. We urge any board member who feels they cannot be impartial to recuse themselves from this decision. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
That page, see sign popping from our members.
Uh, silly dog role sentence.
That was at eighty-five percent of our membership sign.
Of the membership of the.
Bye, I'm Susan, um, dog, excuse me, retired teacher. I'm here on behalf of the abandoned booster club. I have been part of the abandoned booster club for years. I'm currently the vice president. I have, um. Was president for a number of years. The booster club plays an important role in our students, uh, in band. We have been successful throughout the years, but having Sean that being involved, uh, superintendent has made our booster club stronger. All the years that I have been involved, no other superintendent has been a member of booster club. Sean has shown leadership in, uh, our district by being part of this organization. She's attended monthly meetings. Uh, shown up to help with anything that is needed, fundraisers and gold rush. She attends games and events showing our students, coaches, and parents that she cares. Share, uh, students come first for her. And then, and the booster club needs her strength and dedication as she has shown to our student body. Thank you.
Uh, Karina Taylor.
Dear abandoned school board members, my name is Karina Taylor, and I have lived in abandoned for nine years. I'm writing both as a concerned citizen and parent of two students in the district. First, as a parent, I learned this week that my son just lost his math teacher. Lyndon is passionate about math. That may sound weird, but it's true. If you ask any of his wonderful elementary teachers. They're all back here. Travis Hall, Goodwin, Chelsea Weston, Martullahs, they will surely confirm that math is the thing that lights the room. Behind the windows of this kid's eyes. This year has been wonderful so far for my son, and a big part of that has to do with the fact that for the first time, he has a dedicated math teacher. Miss Ship has been able to push him to the edges of his zone of proximal development, and this has made school engaging. Challenging and rewarding for him. Unfortunately, like so many other employees in this district, Miss Ship has been on the receiving end of retaliatory actions. Involuntary transfers and generally abusive labor practices. Due to this treatment, she resigned last week, and as a result, my son and his classmates do not have a math teacher. As we all know by now, this is not an isolated incident, and this is not the result. Of a small group of disgruntled employees. This district has become an unsafe environment to work in. Over twenty employees have already resigned and as a direct result of gross and negligent mistreatment of employees by the superintendent. In the last year alone, we've lost three well-respected math teachers. It's unlikely that these positions will be filled by equally qualified candidates. So I leave you with this question and heartfelt concern. Who is going to teach my kid now that over half the highly qualified math teachers in the district have resigned? Due to mistreatment by our current superintendent. Secondly, as a citizen and former employee, I have firsthand knowledge and informed concern about the. About the mistreatment of employees and potential violations of fiduciary responsibility and the public trust. My informed consent stems from my personal experience dealing with the superintendent during her first weeks on the job. It was COVID times, so I guess in an ironic sense, you could call me patient zero. I was the first to experience the irrational outbursts, authoritarian tirades, and irrational thinking that has become. Known as our current superintendent's calling card. I'm happy to share a detailed report on my experience upon request, but for our purposes here, I will just say this. Our superintendent wasted tens of thousands of district dollars. On legal fees, administrative leave salary, substitute payroll costs, and retraining, rehiring, and attempt to slay my name. All of this turmoil, waste, and negative energy could have been avoided with a few brief, professional, and transparent discussions. Since confidential employees are non-union represented, I did immediately seek guidance from one specific mentor. With the Oregon School Business Officials, New Business Manager Institute, and then legal counsel swiftly after. After three months of paid leave, I removed myself from my position under Shauna Schmier's leadership. I then moved to a different district to continue my school business career, and am in no way disgruntled. I share this experience only to illuminate two facts. One, I have personal experience with the way employees are treated. And two, after writing the two thousand nineteen to twenty-two budget books, I'm one of the few qualified citizens in our community. When it comes to identifying red flags that relate to fiduciary responsibility by the district. Having followed the district budget closely for the past few years, there are several items that need to be brought to your attention. Below, I listed a few concerns, and if you would like more details about any of these items, please reach out to me. Number one, inappropriate relationships between the superintendent and school board members, specifically personal relationships with members. Who were responsible for the superintendent's annual reviews and salary increases and mid-year add-ons. Number two, nepotism with regards to hiring, firing, and salary. Number three, the fourteen thousand dollar travel budget the superintendent received in twenty twenty-four is a red flag. The actual expenditures were over fifteen thousand. Historically, this item would have been less than half this number. Why was it so high? Number four, actual salary percentage increases in function twenty-three twenty, executive administration. Compared to classified. And certified increases. The actual salary for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is documented. As point nine six full-time equivalency, which is especially concerning. Where is the other point zero four F T E salary listed? The superintendent took over an interim director of operations position, and I quote, I sucked at it. What was the negotiated salary for that position? I want to close by saying that I moved to abandon to raise my family, and I am deeply committed to the well-being of this community. I'm thankful for all the hard work of district employees, coaches, community members that have helped make this a great place for my family. And I pledge to continue the fight to make this school district the best it can be. I would also like to say that. In addition to the large number of current and former employees who have already shared their stories, there are many more. Who have not, due to concerns about retaliation against themselves and their families. While I understand their reticence, I hope that my being here will help them gain the courage to come forward and share their experiences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, Barry Winter. I didn't have time to put out my note together, so I got a bunch of scribbles here. But you know, I, I listen when I hear things like. And I want to blame Sean, and I thought it was principals, and he's one of the schools, not with the boss. And then it goes from there to Sean. So I was kind of curious how, how that goes. It's kind of weird that it's all. All these things, which seems to be Sean's fault, and, you know, mission that they try and work out with their boss. In the real world, the boss is the boss, and then the boss may have another. So then here, I see the principals as the boss, and then superintendent and final boss. And in the real world, when you start attacking your boss, you're, you're in supporting. You're gonna harass him, and usually, in the real world, to get fired, you know? So I, I'm real surprised that this is still going on, and it's, it's still. You know, it's a witch hunt, and it's really, really strange for me how that goes. Um, Paul was said now is, we don't like the way that she acts, we don't like the way she dresses, we don't like the way who she associates with. I don't know, I've been a man a lot of time, a long time, and you just, you're associating with the people in abandoned. And you may not have some, you know, you find somebody you like, you usually spend more time with. That's pretty standard here. I've heard complaints, I don't for. Since I was in the fifth grade, about different teachers or different principals or different superintendents and how they acted. And so that's been, you know, kind of a thing throughout all the years. Yeah, you know, when you have friends, you have friends, and shouldn't matter. I think that, you know, if you look at the school board, they, they volunteer in time, none of them get paid. They have other work, other jobs, and they're here to do what they can do to make sure that the school. Gets run correctly. So it's just really funny how it all goes down, and I, as a taxpayer in this district. I, I spend a, a lot of dollars on the school budget. And if you think that for a minute I want you to fire somebody and pay them off. I'm gonna be a real upset guy. I'm not, I'm not gonna be a very good supporter. That's gonna be a bad deal. Um, if you, if you, uh, if you're a member of this district, I think you should have standing. If you're not a member of this district, I don't think you should have standing. I think that, uh, you know, if you, if you get to come here because the, the district accepts your children. And you're not a taxpaying member, I think that's a privilege. And, uh, I, I just, uh, I, I was surprised with this, I'm surprised that we're letting this happen in our school. And, um, I, 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 I'm surprised that. It's too much work for the teachers. I heard you say that, more work, more work, more work. I don't know that anybody's overworked in this room, but maybe.
Uh, Carrie Lawson.
Um, I'm reading this on behalf of Catherine Elstrich, who has grandchildren and then school district. And she's a retired teacher. Her career lasted forty years. Her education includes teaching in administrative private schools, nineteen years serving McMenmore School District, and seventeen of those years as a classroom teacher. Washer and elementary, teaching recreational programs with working teachers at homeschool and E E programs. My experience in education is extensive and have worked in various kind of capacity. I've served on teaching, hiring committees, and mentoring numerous teachers of their beginning careers. Led grade level data teams and designed curriculum to improve students' outcomes, written grants for school classroom teachers. And organized school-wide family running event. Given my professional background, I would like to express my concern about the number of staff turnovers and resignations that the abandoned school district has experienced. And the leadership of your current superintendent. I urge you to look at this issue and the impact it has, is having on a working environment, ultimately on your students and their education. Administrative turnover, business managers, since the hiring of your current superintendent in twenty twenty-one. You have had three different business managers, a position that is responsible for the crucial financial management of the stability of long-term operations. Even with a qualifying manager, the high turnover is the. Even with a qualifying manager, the high turnover is a critical position, needs to have errors in financial records, distributions and services, and erodes trust and fiscal management. With every departure of your business manager, there is a loss of institutional knowledge that gives the superintendent untethered power over the administrative staff. Without the institutional knowledge, which is new business manager, is pressured to submit to the directives of the superintendent in order to avoid delays, disruptions, and confrontations. With this submission, your business manager becomes the superintendent's escape goal. Administrative staffing and financial management. I suggest an in-depth review of administrative staffing positions and financial records under your current superintendent. What administrator or administrative support staff positions have experienced turnover under the super, or the current superintendent? What positions have been added, dropped, or consolidated? Evaluate the factors contributing to the turnover of administrative position under your current superintendent. Review the hiring practice of your current superintendent. Does the superintendent have prior connections with application or applicants that give them an advantage over the applicants, and thereby demonstrating a basis or bias in hiring? Does the superintendent overlook qualifications, experience, and other factors that impact the school district environment and overall manage of the district operations? Conduct a thorough professional review of financial records. Smaller schools may not have strong internal controls allowing deceptive financial practice go unnoticed. Budget line items can be presented in ways that do not give a substantive or full understanding of how funds are used. Some of the most common forms of deceptive practices are the use of district credit card or travel incentive, with the most common perpetrators being superintendents and administrators.
So I'm just gonna continue where teachers now turn over is through conversations with family and friends. Concerns about a stable learning environment have been raised. It has been noted by a number of families that teachers are leaving schools for the, uh, community. Reviewing statistical data on the number and timing of highest and departures of different employee positions within the district would be useful in determining trends. Should such data validate cause for concern, the school board may need to form a committee to independently collect quali- qualified data such as surveys and interviews of staff that provide insight into the working conditions of various departments of the district. Conditions within an educational organization that may be responsible for staff turnover. Turnovers can include a leadership style that is, uh, ultra, ultra tragic, sorry. Startling enthusiasm and collaboration of leadership that spews inconsistent decision-making, creating tensions and instability. Relatively, practices like administrative leave, job transfers, and attempts to make targeted employees uncomfortable and resign. Actions which cultivate fear and lack of trust. Communication breakdowns and avoidance, behaviors that damage trust and partnerships. An absence of app- appreciation and encouragement from leadership and colleagues will drive out talented individuals. Teacher turnover is known, uh, to negatively impact students' achievements. Uh, discourage talented individual, um, is expensive. The departure of the teacher, especially in mid-year, is disruptive to a student's learning, uh, um, and to, uh, staff collaboration. A revolving door of teaching staff can be unsettling and difficult for everybody, students, parents, and teachers uh, to adapt to. When experienced teachers leave a school district, deep community, you know, connections and student knowledge are lost as well as a wealth of, uh, curriculum knowledge and a treasury of, uh, best practices. Replacing teachers, uh, is time-consuming and costs schools, districts thousands of dollars per teacher with efforts poured into, uh, recruitment, hiring, training, and mentoring other education.
Hannah Cruz.
Um, the statement I was going to Oh, you want me to finish that? Okay.
When we, when we, look, we addressed at the beginning that if you have a statement and you're a group, if you could nominate the person and go over what you want to go over, that would be fantastic.
We're trying to keep within the three minutes.
And you're also welcome to, if you email all of this to Connie, she passes it around to all of us.
School boards work for the community, not this. My name's Hannah Cruz. I have a high school learner in the district and a twenty twenty-two bachelor and graduate. Um, so anyway, uh, school boards work for the community.
But Rebecca Farrell be continuing on, but what you're reading.
I don't.
Will the next person be continuing on with what you're reading also?
I.
Do you understand?
This is.
This is, this is.
This is not how it's supposed to go.
Yeah.
This is.
Yes, do you?
One person, three minutes, that person's information. We don't know who wrote this. We don't know where this came from.
She started it in the beginning of your statement, correct?
Yes. Right, it's one person per. And if it's over three minutes, email, we can read twenty pages. It's absolutely funny.
I'm just confused because, um.
Did you write what's in your hand?
No, I didn't.
Okay, then why don't you say what you want to say? That's what I'm saying. You have, but you have your three minutes. I want to hear what you have to say, not the continuation of hers.
I have concerns.
Go for it.
About, uh, about what's happening, uh, mostly with the teacher turnover and how it's directly affecting students.
I appreciate hearing from you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and I have presented these concerns as well, but, uh, mostly about the the teacher turnover and the negative impact it's having on our students' learning. Um, I'm not sure how this supports student outcomes, if that's the reason for these involuntary transfers. Um, how is that just serving our students? Can we have some information on how that serves our students better to have, you know, no honors English, to not have, you know, people's little meetings, each and debate state, you know, championships year after year, being forced out of the district. Um, if it was an isolated incident, it'd be one thing. That's the pattern. We're losing qualified teachers. Kids are doing online, you know, classes because we don't have them in the classroom. So I, I'd really like the board to independently address, kind of from the top down with the superintendent, because you guys are in charge of, of proposition. That's the only place the buck stops with you guys here. So, and I understand it's a small town. I understand we're all gonna be friends and overlap. That's, I don't have a problem with that. Probably people do their own time. But when you're in a position of power and spending our taxpayers' dollars and there's a conflict of interest, there may be points where a recusal is necessary. So that's something I'd like to see considered by the board going forward.
Thank you. That's a reminder. I absolutely am not shutting down conversation. I want to read that entire thing, so please, Carrie, you please email it. Let's keep, keep the comments to yours. Like, I want to hear from you, your three minutes. Not what somebody else wrote for you. So I'm saying I don't want to hear.
Like, is that the norm?
Yes.
So that's like, right?
It's, uh, it's for policy, D D D.
But if the person writing can't be here in person.
Email, we get everything. If it is emailed to Connie, we all get it. Hundred percent. I will guarantee that on my life.
Read a letter that someone who can't be here.
Yes, guarantee it on my life. It goes in the public record. We all get it. We all read it.
I don't, I just mean reading it out loud. They cannot read it out loud.
If you cannot do present, you email it. It goes into the public record.
I always listen to some in the past meetings where the person couldn't be here, and so.
They have three minutes. That was it. So that's why I could go and email, and then we could read it all.
But if we have other members signed up to read a letter of somebody that's on here, can they read it?
They need to, they need to. First to approve it means to submit it.
This isn't new.
So that's unknown. They cannot read it, even if it's under three minutes.
I email it if you can't be here. And that's, that's how it goes. That's how it's always been. Rebecca Farrell.
Thank you.
Holly Sylvester.
I'm gonna email it too.
Holly, I don't think they're allowed to read it.
Holly, is this your thoughts?
We've been listening to written and, um, I have a letter from my colleague Jen Ship that I'd like to share. It is under three minutes. My name is Jennifer Ship. I'm currently the sixth and seventh grade math teacher at Harbor Lights. Last year was extremely hard for most licensed staff. The district's behavior during contract negotiation was like nothing I have ever experienced. Consequences and resulting culture of those actions contributed to my decision. I have taught middle school math for eleven years, four here at Harbor Lights, and last year, a hundred percent of my eighth grade math students met their targeted growth goals and state test scores increased. We also use data-driven criteria to advance students who show readiness. This year, my schedule did not include an eighth grade math class at all. I was told in order to increase rigor, I would, we would skip all eighth grade students from pre-algebra into freshman level Algebra One. This reckless decision is educationally unsound and was made without any teacher input or collaboration. The idea that if students fail Algebra One in the eighth grade, they can retake it in the ninth grade is flawed at best. Our students will be missing foundational pre-algebra skills. Six weeks into our first quarter, it is apparent that this plan is not working. We are setting our students up for failure. Additionally, the letter that went out informing parents of this change was very misleading. It said nothing about students missing eighth grade math in its entirety. If I did not know the grade level standards and what is supposed to be taught at each level, I would not have understood what that letter meant. Ethically, I cannot support skipping the eighth grade year math. Finally, I am truly disappointed in the lack of accountability being taken by the superintendent regarding her behavior and the lack of checks and balances shown by the board. I have worked in other districts, and this is not normal. Districts do not operate this way. Turnover does not occur at this rate. If so many teachers, parents, and community members are upset, there is a very serious problem. One that should be thoroughly investigated and addressed regarding the leadership in the district. Thank you for listening, Jennifer Ship. And I would add to that from my own part. I am fearful that just the act of standing here and identifying myself uh, uh, could result in an intentional effort to make my job harder for me, and that affects my students. Thank you.
Please, tell me.
I'm a parent of two, uh, students in the Bandon School District. Um, and I'm here, uh, to express my deep concern about the atmosphere even in this room tonight. This is not conducive to education, and it is not the environment that my family moved into five years ago. We entered this school district from a larger district with more resources and felt so lucky to be a part of this community, and were touched by the skill and dedication of every teacher that my two daughters have had come across in this district. Um, many of them spoke tonight, and it is just so disheartening to see that systematically dismantled over the last, at least year that I've been aware of, but it's getting increasingly bad by the My middle school daughter has lost three teachers since the beginning of the school year. That is just not acceptable. It's disruptive to her educational experience, and these were all dedicated wonderful teachers with experience and, and skill, and they're not easily replaceable. Um, I recognize the challenges of managing a budget and making these tough decisions. But I have to ask the board to intervene here. There's something that has, has shifted and has gone terribly wrong. Um, and if we continue down this path, the kids are the ones that are gonna pay the price for it. We need to support our teachers, and we need to work together for solutions. This should not be an adversarial situation. Like, we are all part of this district. We all share the same goals, and, and we need to find a way to recognize them without doing what we're doing.
Cory.
Stuart. Hi, my name's Cory Stewart. Um, I have three kids in this whole district. Um, one at Ocean Crest, one at Harwood Lights, and one at High School. Uh, uh, I skipped out on coaching my son's soccer practice tonight to be here. Um, I agree with all of these teachers and um, that there needs to be a review of the current administration. Uh, my daughter must be in your daughter's classes because we lost three out of four of her teachers and, um, you know, I'm just basically like, well, you know, what's gonna happen next week? So, uh, she loves cross-country. Uh, we love Bandon. My Emmett is uh, in band and, uh, absolutely loves it. Uh, we, um, we make sacrifices to, you know, have our kids have the privilege of going to school here in band at New York Tech, being American citizens. Um, even if we live in Curry County, we're paying taxes. We're paying state taxes. We're paying county taxes. We're paying for some kid to look school in Curry County. It does not matter where. This is America. We can send our kids to school, to a private school if we want to. A public school is a public school. And, um, I, uh, I'm just, I'm, I'm deeply concerned about where this administration is going. This is not an all of a sudden thing. Or that I have learned about it, or I've done research. It is not all of a sudden. It's been like for five years. It's been happening. So uh, just this year, it like obviously, that's really impacted my family. My daughter's, she struggles in math, and now doesn't have a math teacher. Uh, her study hall is basically, you know, was, was supposed to be for that purpose, and now she doesn't have anybody there to help with the math. And so, um, we're doing what we can, and, um, I appreciate everybody here who's volunteering their time to be here, and all the parents, all the teachers who drove here, took times out of their evening to be here. Um, I just wanted to let you know I support you that something has to change here.
All right, that's everybody. Uh, motion to adjourn.